In order to do so, I want to welcome everyone here today. Thank you all for coming. Very good crowd turnout.
I believe you are first up.
Twelve years ago, when the county commission wanted to raise the sales tax to expand an ineffective initiative care plan, I wrote an op-ed piece in the newspaper. I was not a NEBA member at the time, but I received a phone call from the NEBA board and met with them, and I joined forces with NEBA, including some of the people in this room, and we defeated that tax at the polls. I later joined NEBA and served on the board for three years. Earlier this year, when the Children's Services Council first was presented, I knew that not enough research had been done on the subject. So I asked Will if I could attend a board meeting. I presented some information to the NEBA board. They picked up the ball and ran with it, and I congratulate them for postponing the vote until 2020, when more research can be conducted. I retired eighteen months ago after forty years in the workforce, most of which was in the healthcare industry. I'm running because I'm very disturbed about what's happening in our community. We have high crime, high taxes, a mediocre economy, and a government that no one trusts. It's time for us to bring a new person into our local government, someone who is not a political insider, someone who will bring change to the county commission, and that's me. I look forward to answering your questions, and thank you very much.
Rick, you're up.
Thank you, Ted. Leon County residents want their next county commissioner to be honest, hardworking, fair, and with a record of successful results. Throughout my experience and my community involvement, I've demonstrated these qualities more than anyone else in this race. I currently serve as the CEO of the Big Ben Food Bank. I manage a staff of twenty-seven employees, as well as an annual operating budget of $2 million, with an inventory of $10 million. And I've also got quite a bit of experience in business and in government. Our next county commissioner should have both. I served as a senior manager for Accenture for nine years, working on consulting projects in Hong Kong, South Africa, Canadian Maritimes, Germany, as well as the United States. Also have run the financial operations of the small business, making payroll. I've worked a lot in local governments, served as the chief of staff to the mayor's office and developed public policy for state and local governments. My background and experience, I believe, make me the best candidate. I'm going to be very direct. If you're looking for a far-right conservative in this county commission race, don't look at me. You'll do better to look at the other candidates at this table. I'm very careful about how government spends taxpayer dollars, but I'm progressive on social issues. As such, I don't think I'm going to change anyone's mind in this room about voting for me. But I'm here anyway, because I want to show you that if I'm elected, I will listen to you and have an open mind. I think any county commissioner elected should do that. I'm willing to work in good faith with every single person in this room. You're not going to change my values. My values are rock solid, but you might be able to change my ideas and my positions and how we're going to solve these problems in Leon County. I'm looking forward to work with you and make Leon County an even better place to live. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Carlos Ray. I'm running for Leon County Commission, District Three. I'm running because I believe that you derive purpose from responsibilities you take on in life. Since I come to Tallahassee, I've taken on responsibilities to serve my community as best I can. My first job in Tallahassee was Assistant Attorney General prosecuting Medicaid fraud in this state and across the country. I learned the skills of identifying patterns of fraud in organizations, something I think we need right now in our government. I currently serve as Assistant General Counsel for the Department of State. Every day I deal with issues of public records, sunshine law, appearance, cybersecurity, and ethics. Again, issues we need to address in our local government. I've also served in my prior time on the City Board, Code Board, the Leon County Board of Justine Appeals, and the Code and Ministry, and I've also been given the opportunity to serve on the School of Arts and Science Board of Directors. I'm running a simple platform: trust, safety, opportunity. We have to do everything we can to ensure that people trust this local government. I'm going to work to identify the patterns of fraud in our local government as well. Safety: I'm going to make sure that law enforcement has the resources and needs to address the needs of our community, but also make sure the law enforcement understands what the needs are, that they're working with the community hand-in-hand with nonprofits and faith-based organizations to address the needs of our community. And opportunity: I want to make sure that the invisible boot of government is not stamping out the spirits that make it possible to make the tough decisions in life: start a business, start a family. I'm going to make sure that we're working hand-in-hand with our business community here, that we're not pushing the businesses where we want to go or waiting in front of you to make sure you succeed and get our share of profits, which we stay inside and side with a map and compass giving you a path to succeed. I hope to look forward to your questions today.
Good afternoon. My name is Kyle Frost, and I'm running for District Three County Commission. I've been here as long as I can remember. I went to Deer Lake, graduated from Charles High School. I love Leon County. I love Tallahassee. It's the only home I've ever known, and it's the only home I ever want to know. But things need to change. We have a problem with trust in our local government. We have a problem with ethics in our local government. We have a problem with transparency. A little about myself: I started learning how to program by myself, self-taught, in eighth grade, and I decided that I wanted to make apps and be a developer and be an entrepreneur. So I signed up with Apple, started making apps and sold apps, starting in eighth grade all the way through high school, with one of my best months making over $10,000. I currently work at Capital Health Plan. I've been there for four years since I was nineteen years old. I still go to school part-time. I'm a young professional. I want to be able to find ways to retain the talent that we have coming out of Florida State, FAMU, TCC, keep those entrepreneurs in town, make it easier to start a business so that we can bring jobs back here to Tallahassee that we're losing out of our world-renowned And lastly, we've got to restore trust. I want to be an approachable county commissioner. I want you to be able to call me, text me, email me, stop me on the street, ask me a question, just talk to me about an issue. I want to be someone that's not just a politician. I don't want to be that. I want to be a public servant. I want to work for the constituents. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Rex Rexes. It's my first time ever going into any kind of candidacy for anything, but I have started to see many problems here in Tallahassee after living here in twenty-two years in my district, District Three. They have, to me, I've heard people tell me that the baby boomers aren't doing enough out there, and the reason being is that us baby boomers were actually working every day, and we left it up to the politicians to do our jobs for them, for us, and they didn't ever do it. Or some did and some didn't. But I found that it was better for me to get up and try to at least make a stand here and do something for the community, since we've got a lot of issues here, considering that we're number one in the rate of crime in the state of Florida. That's not a very good line of thinking for us. But I planned on doing a lot of changes as far as NEBA. I've never been associated with it, but I have got a little bit of a background in doing corporate research, so I do understand corporate LLCs as corporations and such. But anyway, I want to thank you for inviting me here, and hopefully you'll give me a chance at the voting booth. Thank you.
All right. Here's our first question. One minute for each of the answers. Okay, Rick? Here we go. There's been a lot of discussion about this issue. We'd like to know, do you support the county commission's decision to delay the Children's Services Council till 2020? Why or why not?
I'm glad it's on the ballot in 2020. I work, as I mentioned before, I'm the CEO of the Food Bank, and we feed an incredible number of children in Leon County, the Big Ben. Hunger's a major problem here. One in five children in the Big Ben are hungry. One of my staff members told me the other day that she's providing cooking classes at Bond's, and a single mother walked up to her and said, "I drink water during the day to save off hunger, to avoid the hunger pain, so that I can afford to feed my kids later that day, later that evening when they come back from school." That's a sign that we have a serious problem. It's not people trying to get something for nothing. It's people trying to struggle and get through with what they have. I support the CSC. I support it being on the ballot in 2020. I will work as a county commissioner to provide information in a clear, fair, honest way to the public so they can make that decision on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you.
Emily?
I'm glad it was delayed, so it gives us time to identify the true need in this community. We understand the situation, socioeconomic division in this community, but we have to understand what the need is and how to best address it. I always believed you address a problem by a matrix of identifying the solution is solvable and has been neglected at this time. Right now, they have not done sufficient enough job to identify the needs of this community to a sense of how we can best address it. I always believed we should use evidence-based policy to make sure we understand what the goals are of the policy, so when it's progressing, we can measure and understand if we're succeeding or not. And also to identify, if there is a need, what are the resources currently available to serve that need? They're saying that there is a socioeconomic divide, but there's a lot of resources out there I think have not been tapped in sufficiently, or reassess those resources, see how they can better serve the community on a larger scale. Instead of turning to our community as a whole to put more burden on them, let us look at the resources we have available to help the community as a whole.
Okay. Kyle?
I'm in favor of the CSC being on the 2020 ballot, but I'm worried about it being a new taxing authority. I'm not a big fan of that. But at the same time, the studies have shown that Leon County has an issue that needs to be addressed. But the county commission already has programs that are built to service children. So I think we need to work with the Our Kids First PAC that is putting together a plan for what the CSC would do, identify where there are redundancies in services that the county already provides, and cut those out of the counties. That way, we can bring taxes down to match what they would be raised by the CSC. So at the end of the day, I am in support of it, but I think that the county budget needs to be looked at so that the taxpayers aren't getting a bigger burden at the end of the day.
CSC is something I had been aware of and I have been following. That's not one of the things that I'm in approval of. I remember, Rick, when back in 1990s, it was voted down. It's been on the shelf for like thirty years. How come it came up all of a sudden when we're rated number ten in the state of Florida and the city and our services that we're giving our children? That doesn't make sense to me. And half cent on our property taxes is not one of those things that I'm really liking either, and I'm sure a lot of you people aren't either. And that's going to be $7 million to $8 million a year. And for ten years, that's $80 million. So I don't believe too much of... Maybe there's something there that we missed. It's not like I don't like kids, but I certainly don't like to see my tax dollars go out the window. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Emily?
Hi, thank you. I think it is good that it has been postponed. I do have concerns about the fact that creating a new taxing authority could be an issue. I will, I do look forward to reading the studies and the reports they come up with, but I believe the county commission can provide services to children now themselves without creating a new taxing authority. For instance, the primary care program that we had in place only had 200 pediatric patient visits in 2017. That's pathetic. We could utilize the services we have now better. And also, if the county commission is in charge of this, then if the public is not satisfied with how the money is managed, they can vote the county commissioners out of office. They can't vote the members of Children's Services Council out of office. So I think that is a better route to go, but I am open-minded and will read the study.
Number two, and I'll start with you, Rick. Are you willing to support a citizens' budget committee that would have the opportunity to make recommendations on trimming expenses in the county budget?
Yes.
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 I guess we made that one too easy for you guys. All right. The third question, we'll start with Carlos. Do you support the idea of a mobility tax as a substitute for the concurrency tax that developers currently pay?
Is it a study or just actual tax? It's all the same.
It's a mobility tax, the actual tax. Do you support it or the concurrency tax?
No.
I don't know enough about it.
Okay. Rex?
No.
Emily?
I want to see what the mobility fee study...
Yes or no?
I can't answer yes or no. There's a study coming out that has not been...
Yes or no, please.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm not worried about taxes. I can tell you that much.
Okay.
That I can tell you.
All right. Rick?
It depends.
I think that's what Emily said.
It's not a fair question to answer yes or no.
Well, you know, we're not fair. All right. This one here, you're going to love. Number four, and I guess we start with Carlos, huh? Kyle. All right. Thank you for doing that. All right. Do you support increasing the local minimum wage? Yes or no?
No.
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 Yes.
No.
Okay. Rick, this is a follow-up question for you. For those who answered yes, and I think that was you, the minimum wage, what dollar amount would you raise it to, and just a number?
I'm not going to answer that directly, but I will tell you this.
Yes, can we just get a number or can you say?
I decline. I decline the answer of specific number.
Okay.
But it has to be larger than what it is right now.
Okay. We figure that out. All right. We're going to have to go back to some of our other questions here, and I'm confused as always. This is the next question. What are, and I think it starts with Kyle. What are you prepared to do specifically to help small business owners as a county
Speaking with some of the business owners that are here in town, small business owners specifically, both in the city and in the county, I've heard the permitting process is just overwhelming. There's not a clear direction on where to start. There's not a clear direction on where you need to go once you do begin. So I think we need to look at our permitting process and either simplify it, make it easier, possibly more affordable, and also, if someone wants to start a business in Tallahassee, we should almost be holding their hand to show them how to do it. We shouldn't expect them to just go through this process on their own if it's so difficult that some people are intimidated to do it on their own.
Well, my experience in the business world is that you've got the first half drive to get into the business that you want to get into. There's nothing about, no offense, but there's nothing about holding somebody's hand to get into the business. Some of the people out here didn't have anybody holding their hand to get through their job and to get their business started. But I'm all for education and trying to get those people developed into an idea of where they can go on their next level of business growth. I've done it myself, and it's a very tough road. Most businesses fail within like two years. So you'll know pretty quick, and as far as us giving out money to people that we don't know if they've got enough drive to fulfill their obligation to the money that we've already given these people, you know, I'm willing to help, but let's get our story straight on that, and let's just go ahead and let them do their...
Okay. Thank you, Rex.
Thanks.
Am I allowed to respond?
Yes. Well, I think the best thing that local government can do to help small businesses is leave them alone. They have too much government in their pockets. Typical example are some of the taxes, and again, you've heard what I think about the minimum wage. I agree permitting needs to be streamlined and easier to deal with, but we need to let you run the business the way you see fit, pay your employees what you want to pay them and what the employee agrees to, no additional county imposed personnel policies. And we also, if we can increase, improve the overall standard of living in Leon County, and part of that is reducing the crime, making it a more attractive place to live, then business will improve because people will need to buy the products and services that your businesses provide.
Yeah, thank you.
Four things: we need to streamline permitting, number one. Number two, we need to, as a local government, always be looking for ways to reduce costs for businesses. The business utility rebates from a few years ago was a good idea. We need to look for examples like that. In Leon County, we need to do a skills gap analysis of our graduating high school students. You know, if we can figure out the industries that we can train them on before they start knocking on your door for a job, that saves you money in the long run, and they're more likely to stay in Tallahassee and be productive citizens if we can take a look at what they need to satisfy your needs in your small business. Finally, the economic development sales tax dollars, which we're going to start getting in 2020, that's about $5 million a year, we need to take a look at, OEB needs to make sure that we are taking those dollars and spending those in a way that's going to give us the greatest ROI for our businesses. Thank you.
Okay. Carlos?
I believe the way local government can help local businesses is to change their headlines in our newspapers from crime and corruption to opportunity and growth. We can do that by working with local businesses, identifying the roadblocks to prevent them from starting business here locally. Identify the roadblocks in taxes, permitting, and work together with businesses to identify those roadblocks as well. Another thing we can do is to help maintain talent here locally. People don't leave Tallahassee because they know restaurants or good music venues. They leave here because they have no connection to this community. We have to bridge that gap between local businesses and the graduates of FSU, and create internship so these people can stay here and start working here as soon as they graduate, so they realize there's opportunity to work here. And for those who have left, create an environment where they want to bring back the families and grow here and live here for rest of lives, so we create an environment that people feel proud of Tallahassee and Leon County.
Next question. Emily, we'll start with you. As an elected county commissioner, what would be your number-one priority for Leon County?
We need to improve our stick, we need to improve our standard of living. People in Leon County make less than the state average, but the cost of living in Leon County is higher than the state average. We need to make it a more attractive place for people to live, for businesses to come. If we don't, if we don't have a thriving business community, we don't have a thriving community. Obviously, fixing the problems at the dispatch agency is an issue because that's related to crime. We also need to change how we do business at the county. We need to change our contracting and bidding process so that the taxpayers get the best product for the best services to keep the taxes down. We need to change, to improve our standard of living for everybody.
Okay. Rick?
My answer is similar to Emily's in that ultimately, I want to do everything I can as a county commissioner to improve the quality of life for everyone here in Leon County, and that means progress on several fronts. That means reducing crime. That means protecting our environment, saving taxpayers' dollars, improving government efficiency, restoring trust and credibility in government, and bringing more high-paying jobs to my District Three as well as to Leon County. Now, we could spend a whole day talking about each of these things. One quick example, though: what I would like to do is invest more money to recruit businesses that are interested uniquely in the MagLab magnetics research. If we can develop a high-tech magnetics industry cluster here in Tallahassee, that brings new money, new companies into Tallahassee, and it also benefits all of our small businesses because these businesses coming in are paying high wages to employees, and they're going to need printing services, PR services, personnel processing. They're going to benefit all of us by having this industry cluster here in Leon County.
I think my number-one priority is to establish a principle that infrastructure should outpace growth, that we shouldn't have a situation where we're trying to catch up to growth. I'm an expat from Miami. I used to drive an hour each day to go to work one way. When my wife, when she came here to Tallahassee, she got to work in twelve minutes, she didn't know what to do herself. We want to ensure that that quality of life is not impacted. We want growth to take place with growth with principle, growth with a vision. So let's put the infrastructure in place that actually not only impacts growth, but also impacts safety, impacts a sense of place. With infrastructure spent wisely, we can create, improve neighborhoods, create a better sense of community in this, in our environment. So also, I will work towards ensuring that our main principles ensure that we have a clear vision of where we want Tallahassee and Leon County to go, so we put the infrastructure in place so that growth can match that infrastructure and that impact of quality of life, and ensure that LP would come here, actually continue to have the quality of life they first moved here in the first place.
Can you repeat that?
Sure. Happy to. What is your number-one priority if elected as county commissioner?
Number-one priority? You know, I ask the question again because saying quality of life is just such a political answer, because you can just talk about everything. Everyone wants a better quality of life, right? Who doesn't? I mean, if you honestly don't want a better quality of life, I don't know what you're doing. One of the things that's important to me for the county commission is making sure that we bring it into the 21st century. We print a lot of things, and running for office, this is me, my first time, I've realized printing things costs money. We often win awards here in Leon County for being one of the most technical counties in Florida, sometimes in the nation, and I don't know why we're not harnessing that to make sure that we are saving money in our budget, and hopefully, we can give that savings back to the taxpayers.
Okay, Rex?
I want Tallahassee to remain what I remember twenty-two years ago. It was a beautiful location, place to go, people can come here and visit. I'd like to see Lake Jackson taken back to its original form when I saw people out there with ski doos or whatever out there on the lake. I was actually part of this group that was in Save Our Forest on Northwest Side in District Three. I was one of the last speakers in the city commission talking about saving our forest. By the way, they're not going to do the, they're not going to erect the ball fields. I talked to somebody I know there, and I don't believe that's going to happen. So that's one thing. It's a positive thing, and that's not even my jurisdiction actually for District Three, and I'm not even a commissioner either, but I just went in there as a civilian. But I think we need to keep our place and keep drugs out of our area, too. That's another one.
We'll start with you.
Like I said before, I'm probably the youngest one here, and I know I'm the youngest of the candidates. One issue that keeps coming up as I'm talking to people, just walking neighborhoods and meeting professionals like yourselves, is that we're not retaining our talent from Florida State, FAMU, and TCC. These aren't people that I'm meeting when it comes to who we want to retain. These are my friends, people I've grown up with, people I've met going to school. I think that I offer a very unique advantage when it comes to knowing and listening to them, because I don't just listen and know what they want. I feel it myself. My wife and I just got married back in October, and we had to decide whether we wanted to stay in Tallahassee, because for some young professionals, it almost feels like Tallahassee doesn't want us, and I think that's a huge problem. And hopefully, being the young professional that I am myself, I can help that issue.
Okay. Go ahead, Carlos. Yeah, we'll go that way.
I hope I've demonstrated today that I've given you a new perspective of how government should work, new ideas of how to approach governance. I was raised in a working-class family of principles of faith, hard work, and thirst for knowledge. I carry those principles throughout my education and my profession. I'm going to carry those same principles as I work as your county commissioner. I want to be able to, I want to listen to all of you. I'm your voice in the county commission. I don't want to be a politician, sitting there collecting my check and just waiting for the next election to come around to knock on your door and say, "Hey, remember me? I was here last time." I want to be there when you call and make sure your water's running, electricity's on, your trash is picked up. That's my job, to make sure that you're living a quality of life that you've worked hard for. I want to be your voice in the county commission to make sure that you are willing to live that life, not only for you or for your family. I'm working because I want to make sure that my daughter, when she grows up, this is an option for her as she grows older, that this may be an option for her when she raises her family and says, "Tallahassee is my home."
I came here today knowing that there would not be one person in this room that I would convince to vote for me that hadn't already decided to. I knew that, but I came here anyway because I wanted to demonstrate to you that I see it as an obligation of a county commissioner, if I get elected, to have an open mind and listen. We have a lot of disagreements, you and I, but it's important that I have an open mind, listen to your ideas. You're not going to change my values, but you might change my ideas and my position You're not going to change my values, but you might change my ideas and my positions on programs and my vote and how we allocate our taxes. Those are all important things. And a couple months ago, I had coffee with Steve Stewart, and he asked me, "If I come up with you..." "If I show you a report that I disagree with and I have different calculations, what are you going to do, Rick?" I said, "I'll take it to the county and explain why these discrepancies exist." I'm going to live up to that commitment to Steve and to all of you. I'm open-minded. I want to work with you to address the problems in this county.
Is it started?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're very fair, Peggy. Thank you so much. Thank you. This is going to be a very important election for the people of Leon County because you have the opportunity to pivot away from a political establishment candidate and elect someone different. I am not an insider. I have lived my entire life as an outsider of the local government, and I'm a change agent. I'm not afraid to speak up, and even if it ruffles some feathers, I'm going to ask a lot of questions. When I watch county commission meetings and people don't ask questions, it baffles me that no one's questioning. I can also do the job full-time, and you will get your money's worth. The others, my opponents, most of them have full-time jobs, and they can't read an 1,800-page county commission agenda in three days. Even I will have a hard time reading it in three days, but I can, and I will not be a rubber stamp.
Okay, Rex, you're up. Want to stand up?
Yes. Would you ever prefer? Well, I certainly have enjoyed my time here. It's the first time I've ever been here, and I certainly appreciate it to start off. But I'm basically semi-retired, and I guess like some of you folks are, too. And I took a leap of faith in jumping into this race, thinking that maybe I can make a difference. And hopefully, I could make a difference if I got elected. And I certainly hope you would consider me when we go into August 28th. But I certainly have appreciated it, and I'll be there to make, answer that phone call that when you call and you're looking for some help, I'll be there. There's no doubt in my mind about that. Even some of my worst occasions, while I don't like to answer a phone, I will call you back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, all candidates, the round of applause for all candidates.